Our team, with respect to which the legislature has powers to make laws, apparently, the result of investigations such as this are expected to form the basis for lawmaking, shaping public policy, exposing corruption and averting the reoccurrence of unpatrotic or shady practices, particularly in areas where public trust is at stake. Following deliberations and a motion on the need to investigate federal government abandoned projects from nineteen ninety-nine to date, the House of Representatives on Wednesday, twenty-four July, twenty-nineteen, resolved to set up an ad hoc committee to investigate federal government's abandoned projects since nineteen ninety-nine, of which this ad hoc committee on communications is one of the committees. The ad hoc committee is therefore mandated to investigate abandoned projects from nineteen ninety-nine to date and in particular establish costs of award of contracts, period of award of contract, state of completion or status of project and of course constraints. The various sense of this exercise is to enable us to advise the House on the prioritization of projects and the location of funds to produce so that we can ensure the completion of those abandoned and uncompleted projects within the lifespan of the current administration. Ladies and gentlemen, it is well known fact that there are several projects awarded to contractors by federal government agencies, parasitarians, ministers, commission and boards from nineteen ninety-nine, some of which have been abandoned or are yet to be completed. Despite receiving advanced payments of not less than fifty percent as well as other payments, government has invested several billions of naira without getting value for the money. This needs to change. This must change if the nation is to have a meaningful development in terms of infrastructure delivery, the supply of social services among other things. To this end, therefore, the ninth House of Representatives through this ad hoc committee requires the critical stakeholders, which include the Federal Minister of Communication Technology, Nigerian Communication Commission, National Information Technology Development Agency, Nigerian Postal Service, Nigerian Communications Satellite Limited and Garazi Backbone Limited, to make necessary submissions which will be useful as we aim to complete this enormous assignment. We also expect other stakeholders, including contractors and the general public here present, to make useful contributions and submissions in the course of today's hearing. It is our belief that the nation belongs to all of us and together we shall make things work. Consequently, I implore us to give our best in the course of today's hearing. We shall not leave any still unturned. We are determined to dig into the root of the matter and we also determined to generate the set of solutions that will cure this menace of abandoned and uncompleted projects in Nigeria. This is what we have come to do and we must achieve it, God willing. Once again, let me commend all of us for finding time out of our position to attend the public hearing and wish you faithful deliberations. May God guide us in this study of our duties. Thank you.
To be with you today as the ad hoc committee on communications to investigate federal government abandoned projects since nineteen ninety-nine to date holds a public hearing on federal government abandoned projects since nineteen ninety-nine. I want to specially welcome all stakeholders who have responded to our invitation to this important public hearing. You will recall that on Wednesday, twenty-four July, twenty-nineteen, the House of Representatives deliberated on a motion on need to investigate federal government's abandoned projects from nineteen ninety-nine to date. I resolved to set up ad hoc committees to investigate federal government abandoned projects since nineteen ninety-nine. As you are aware, excellent infrastructure gives rise to growth and development of the economy. It is disheartening to note that Nigeria's infrastructure gap has been widening in recent years owing to, among other things, the abandonment and lack of completion of capital projects. Why are projects abandoned? What are the reasons for non-completion of projects? As a nation, we need to provide answers to this and other related questions. Projects must be completed in record time as well. It is worrisome to note that there are over twenty thousand abandoned and uncompleted projects nationwide and that several of such projects have received advanced payments of not less than fifty percent without much to show for the funds so far spent. This is an ugly and dangerous trend and we must not allow this to continue. Prosperity would not forgive us if we allow this to continue. And I make bold to say today that if the House of Representatives in its oversight responsibility does not step in at this time to run the high risk of continuing this part of unending national expenditure without verifiable value for money. This exercise is therefore critical given that these abandoned projects have become a constant and ugly feature in our yearly national budgets and a conduit through which national resources are drained. This exercise is not aimed at enchanting any institution or person. Its access is to find a solution to the drift which the nation has found itself in. We must find solutions. We must complete projects that have been started irrespective of when and who started them. As you are aware, project completion is one of the cardinal objectives of President Mahmoud Bouarele's administration and we will do everything possible within the ambit of the law to support him in the realization of this noble objective. This, of course, is a key pillar of the joint task for nation building and I call on all to join hands to build the nation. As we look forward to the report of this investigation and I have no doubt that your contribution will be useful as we chart a new course towards the completion of the ongoing, uncompleted and abandoned projects nationwide. I also hope that through this public hearing we can generate a national consensus on the need to cope this menace of abandoned projects. While wishing you frank and robust deliberations, I hereby declare this public hearing over. May God bless you and bless the Fira.
We have been ordered, mandated to investigate abandoned, uncompleted and ongoing projects in the communication sector of our national economy. This was subsequent to a motion moved on the twenty-fourth of July, for which the House adopted the motion and resolved that an ad hoc committee headed by Honorable Tukuma Omogji be constituted to undertake this investigation. Their need for this investigation is not far-fetched. It is to determine why are projects abandoned. From the data we have, you can see thousands of projects. Even the speaker corroborated it that over twenty thousand projects have been abandoned. The question is why are projects abandoned? Similar to that, we also need to determine the reasons why projects are not completed. I'm saying this so that we know that we are not here to enchant anybody or any organization. We are only here to ensure that projects must be completed and on record time for the benefit of the Nigerian people. And the Nigerian people include all of us here and millions outside of here. To this end, I want to believe that this hearing will elsewhere yield the result that will benefit the Nigerian public and the future generation yet unborn. We therefore will believe and will solicit our own alloyed, our commitment and release of necessary data and information that will help this committee to help all the agencies. Let me put it on record, as member of parliament, I will not be here forever. Outside of an agency, you will not be there forever. We are all tenured. It therefore means that what we don't do now, what we fail to do now, will live after us. Whether we like it or not, posterity will record us on the bright side of history if we do not contribute to our little quota to set Nigeria on the course of development. Anybody who said that doesn't know that this country is the way they live, I'm sure it's not part of this country or they're still sleeping or they're dreaming. But how can we salvage it? That is part of this why we're here this afternoon. So behalf of the chairman and members of this committee, we therefore welcome you and solicit very clear, honest information that will lead us to where we all want to be.
If you have your submissions, then you may proceed.
And the D Gs that came with me, good afternoon, sir. My name is Mosa Stefanos and the Permanent Secretary of the Ministry of Communications. On behalf of the Minister of Communications, who has to lead a team of the Universal Poste Union, I challenge to this committee but we would like to say a few words on the documents that have been submitted. Just before I present, say the few words, I would like to say that this committee is one of the most important for Nigerians because, as you are all aware, the ICT is contributing nearly fourteen percent to the GDP, which is higher than the oil, which everybody is thinking is the main contributor to the GDP. And also, it is the ministry that has more inclusive growth pattern because you will find that ICT operates even in the rural community more than oil. So that is why it is an important project. Incidentally, we have very little allocation when it comes to terms of budgeting. It is the one that is supposed to actually take a chunk of our population out of poverty faster than any other one. In the Ministry of Communications Headquarters, we have two abandoned projects. One of which was a dispute and we had to terminate the contract. It is rehabilitation of Phase Two, I mean Awahuze, Zoom Two. We had issues with the contractor and we had to terminate the contract. We are now negotiating on how to pay him off. And it is in the sum of, it was twenty-two million, I mean thirty-eight million. We have paid him twenty-two million. And we are now negotiating to be able to exit from termination. The second one is a little bit, the one that is more challenging to us. It's actually abandoned, as in nothing is happening in respect to that particular one. And it is the supply installation and commissioning of international radio monitoring stations' equipment and national spectrum system. I have come here with the Director of Radio Monitoring, who will give us a complete brief of this particular project that has both onshore and offshore component. And we have seven ongoing projects. They are self-explanatory and I would not like to delay the committee on this. We have submitted the documents. If there are questions in respect to those ones, we would be glad to provide additional information. But Director of Radio Monitoring will take us through this project and it is very, very key to our own ministry. And that is why I think you should come with all the files and the documents. They are all here. We came actually with the physical file from the office so that if there are questions, we want to give all the information in respect to that. The main reason why the contract went into abandonment is because the key partner in the contract, that shortly after the contract was signed and the other partners that were operating with him appears not to understand the contract very much. And he will take us through the details. Thank you very much, sir.
The Honorable Chairman of this ad hoc committee, the Honorable Members of the Committee, Permanent Secretary and others. My name is Junior Kiliobas Benga. I'm Director of Radio Monitoring and Survey Department of the Ministry of Communications. A supply installation and commission of international radio monitoring equipment and national spectrum management system. At its eleventh meeting on seventeenth of March, two thousand and four, the Federal Executive Council approved the award of contract for the supply installation and commissioning of the radio monitoring and national spectrum management system project to Mercer's Capital Communications Limited and Codem Incorporated of the United States at a contract sum of thirty-four million, eighty-three thousand and forty-four dollars, thirty-seven cents. Component is twenty-eight million, four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, forty-seven cents. I had to do that because that was the way the Federal Executive Council approved it. But the primary cost of the equipment, the primary cost initially, the primary cost was twenty-eight million, four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars, forty-seven cents. And says, and the cost of finance, cost of finance was six million, seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars, eighty-four cents. So twenty-eight million plus six million gives you the thirty-four. The cost of finance, initially, the project was to be executed by the contractor through Bayer's credit facility, as it was called, through the Ministry of Finance. But that arrangement didn't work out. So the cost of finance was not included eventually in the contract because it had to go through budgetary provisions. So we just depended on the primary cost of the equipment, the offshore component, which is the twenty-eight million, four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen, forty-seven cents. Also at the meeting, the Federal Executive Council approved a down payment of four million, two hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, sixty-two cents as offshore and also forty-one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred naira for onshore components of the project. That is a fifth, sir. Forty-one million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred naira. It's fifteen percent. Sorry, I didn't mention the onshore, the total onshore component in naira value is two hundred and seventy-six thousand...
Million.
Sorry, two hundred and seventy-six million, three hundred and seventy thousand naira for onshore component of the project, onshore. So the Federal Executive Council had said that the contractor should be paid fifteen percent down payment. So the fifteen percent for the offshore component was four million, two hundred thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two US dollars, sixty-two cents. While the fifteen percent down payment for the onshore component was forty-one million, four fifty-five thousand, five hundred naira. So in the process of documentation and to produce the contract agreement, like my Permanent Secretary said, the principal member of one of the partners to this project, Alaji Dankabo, unfortunately died shortly after that contract was awarded. Two thousand and four, two thousand and four. Sir, the issue is, like I said, during documentation... In the process of documentation, after the Federal Executive Council approved the award of that contract, there were some issues, controversies as to ownership of the project because when the... So the principal member of that contract in the company of the Captel Communications, it was a consortium. We have Captel Communications and Codem of the United States. Alaji Dankabo died and so the contract continued by the member, the other partner of the contract, which is Codem. They had a representative who pursued the implementation of the contract. So in the course of the execution of the contract, six hundred and twenty-seven million naira was dispersed, which comprised the down, fifteen percent down payment. That is the naira equivalent now of the four million dollars and the forty-one million naira for onshore. So the total was six hundred and twenty-seven million naira as initial fifteen percent down payment to implement a schedule, schedule three of the project. We divided the project into schedules, schedule one, two and three. Schedule three had almost all the components that are involved in implementing the project so that in case not enough money was produced, I mean was released for full implementation, you could still use this particular equipment to carry all the monitoring project across the country. So fifteen percent was paid in June, two thousand and six. In two thousand and seven, May, two thousand and seven, two hundred and eighty-three million, one fifty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven point seven eight naira was released to the company to buy additional offshore equipment for the project. Two hundred and eighty-three million, one fifty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven naira, seventy-eight kobo was released to the contractor in May, two thousand and seven to buy additional offshore components of the project. Unfortunately, utilization of the released sum was not accounted for by the contractor. This sum that was released, the contractor didn't account for it. Then later on, in two thousand and seven in December, when we put pressure on the contractor to supply the equipment, in December, two thousand and seven, the equipment were already, some of the equipment were at the airport and he requested for money to clear the goods, the equipment, some of the equipment that had been imported to the country. So sixty-six million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, four thirty-two naira, twenty-two kobo was released for customs clearance and other import-related charges. Two thousand and seven, December, two thousand and seven. Out of that amount paid to the contractor, thirty-two million, six fifty-two thousand, four thirty-eight naira, forty-five kobo was utilized for customs clearance. And sixteen million, two seventy-five thousand, four hundred and three naira was utilized for renovation of one of our radio monitoring buildings in Ipaja in Lagos. Out of the sixty-six million, thirty-two million was used for customs clearance. Sixteen million, two seventy-five thousand, four hundred and three was used to renovate a radio monitoring building at Ipaja in Lagos. Yes. Then seventeen million, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five ninety naira, seventy-seven kobo was not accounted for. That was a balance from the sixty-six million that was dispersed to the contractor for customs clearance. Initially, he just requested sixty-six million for customs clearance. Based on the receipts he provided, only thirty-two million, six fifty-two thousand, four thirty-eight naira, forty-five kobo was utilized for customs clearance. Then out of that amount, sixteen million, two seventy-five thousand, four hundred and three was used for renovation of our building, radio monitoring building in Ipaja, Lagos. But he couldn't account for the seventeen million, nine fifteen thousand, five ninety naira, seventy-seven kobo, which was balance of the sixty-six million.
Why was the money not accounted for?
He couldn't tell us what he used the seventeen million for. Sixty-six million, initially requested sixty-six million to go for customs clearance and other import-related charges. So... Yes, it's the fact, but we needed to see how he utilized it. But he didn't tell us how he spent it. We did. That's why I said he couldn't, they couldn't account for it. So after that, in December, two thousand and eight, through budgetary provision, money was made available. Two hundred million was paid to the contractor to buy additional equipment. Sorry? December, two thousand and eight. December, two thousand and eight, two hundred million naira was paid to the contractor but he didn't account for it. So the... Million, yes, sir. The contractor was paid a total sum of one million, one hundred and seventy-seven thousand... One billion, one hundred and seventy-seven million naira. That was the total amount the contractor was paid up to the time the project was abandoned. That was two thousand and eight. The last two hundred million naira that was paid, that was the last amount that was paid to the contractor. So the total sum of money that was paid to this contractor was one billion, one seventy-seven million naira. Yes. No, sir. So in view of the delay to experiencing implementation of the project and in particular the schedule three, which itemized all the things that we needed to do and based on the down, fifteen percent down payment that the Federal Executive Council directed that it should be paid so that it can execute, begin the execution of the project. So the ministry itemized a schedule three components for them to do. They didn't honor, I mean, complete all those components of the project within that schedule, schedule three. So we raised concerns and kept on talking to the contractor to try and implement those things. So they couldn't. So we now made a recommendation to the PAMSEC then, for the PAMSEC to see the way out, let us find a way forward in how to implement this project. So the PAMSEC suggested that Captel Communications Limited and Codem System Incorporated be written officially to upgrade because time had already passed. After the Federal Executive Council approved in two thousand and four, it was in two thousand and six that the first, I mean the fifteen percent down payment was made. After two thousand and four, then it was in two thousand and six that the first payment was made. So looking at the time that it has taken, find out that the equipment, some of the companies... some, some of the companies must have gone obsolete and, um, we needed to upgrade. So, that's why it was suggested that a letter be written to the company to upgrade the equipment that were specified. So, the, uh, we, uh, the letter was sent, uh, yes, the letter was sent to the company, uh, in US, CORDAM, uh, US. It were written, and to complete all outstanding jobs, including training of staff as the basis for further discussions and negotiations, which was approved by the minister then on... Sir? It was, um, I can't remember, sorry, I can't remember now. But the minister approved this on the fourth of June. It was, um, two thousand and fourteen. Omobala Johnson. Sorry? Omobala Johnson. Two thousand and fourteen. So, this was fourth of June, two thousand and fourteen. So, in response to the ministry's letter, Captel Communications Limited sent a contract review and price validation of the implementation of the project, given reasons of changes in technology and processes after the bidding process. Actually, the bidding of this project started in two thousand and one. So, eventually, in two thousand and four, Federal Executive Council approved it, and the first payment was done in two thousand and six, uh, two thousand and six. So, the jobs that the contractor executed included delivery of five-numbered transportable equipment in crates in December, two thousand and seven. Instead of factory-made containers fitted with the equipment as specified in the contract agreement. They just brought crates of the equipment and brought them to us. We said that wasn't what was specified. They said they were going to do it later here in the country. But it was supposed to be this equipment fitted in containers, and then you mount them on Mercedes-Benz trucks. So that... They didn't do it. They also supplied three project vehicles. And they refurbished the radio monitoring building, uh, in Ipaja, Lagos, as, as I stated. Though that aspect was actually not specified in the schedule three. That renovation that was done was not actually specified. It wasn't specified, but it was one of the companies that will eventually be done. But in that schedule three, which payment was made, he used part of that money. He said that, yes, eventually they were going to do it. So, he still used, uh, part of that sixty-six million naira that was released for customs clearance to, to renew. Yes. Okay, representative of CORDAM. George Logotitis also. He, he's also late.
This particular document, did you submit it to the committee? Do we have, did you submit this committee? Did you submit a document to the committee?
No, sir.
The one you're reading from?
No, sir.
Uh, we, we would like to have a copy of that.
Okay, sir.
Maybe when you finish your submission, you give it to us, we make a copy and give you back.
Okay, sir.
So that the information is more detailed.
Okay, sir. But also refurbished four power generators at Ipaja, Lagos, uh, though they were never tested on load. We wanted them to test, they said that we were going to give us time to go and test it on load, they didn't, or the man didn't. Uh, then also they refurbished four power generators at our Azare Station. We have, we have, actually, we have four monitoring stations outside Abuja. We have one at Azare, we have one at Gusso, one at, um, Ipaja, Lagos, and one at Iyalah, Ogoja in Cross River State. Ogoja. I said outside Abuja, we have Azare, Gusso, Ipaja, Lagos, and Iyalah, Ogoja in Cross River State. So, the outstanding jobs in schedule three as of December, two thousand and eight are as follows. The contractor was supposed to supply containers for installation of the equipment, which should have been factory-fitted in the first place and supplied with external power system. Also, he was to supply transport vehicles for the continentalized equipment. Uh, those are the Mercedes-Benz trucks that he was supposed to, uh, supply. Then, to train ministry officials on radio monitoring and spectrum management system. Then, we have rehabilitation of generators at Gusso and Ogoja. He was also to supply thirty thousand liters of diesel to each of the four radio monitoring stations. No, just to supply thirty thousand liters. One time for each of the monitoring stations was supposed to supply. Yes. And then to complete, there was a building that was started at Gusso, uh, the radio monitoring building. The other, uh, monitoring stations had their monitoring buildings, Gusso didn't have. So, in that contract, you were, uh, the contractor was supposed to complete the monitoring building project at Gusso. They didn't do that. And then, the outstanding one, or the last, but not the least, the testing and handling over of refurbished generators at IRMS Ipaja to the ministry. They didn't do that. So, those are the, uh, are the outstanding, uh, works or jobs that the was, uh, the contractor was supposed to do. So, the payments not accounted for under schedule three include the two hundred and eighty-three million naira, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five sixty-seven naira, seventy-eight kobo, which was paid in May, two thousand and seven. Then, the seventeen million naira, which was the balance of the sixty-six million naira that was paid for customs clearance that he di- he didn't account for. Then, the two hundred million naira that was paid in December, two thousand and eight. Those are payments that were not accounted for by the contractor. So, the total sum of money that was not accounted for was five hundred and one million, seven fifty-nine thousand, twenty-two naira, ninety-nine kobo. Five hundred and one million, seven fifty-nine thousand, twenty-two naira, ninety-nine kobo. The contractor utilized a total sum of six hundred and seventy-five million, two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven naira, one kobo. Six hundred and seventy-five million, two forty thousand, nine seventy-seven naira, one kobo. Out of the one billion, one seventy-seven million naira that was paid. So, the percentage utilization of the total sum paid to the contractor based on the amount that I said they utilize was fifty-seven point three seven percent. Based on the money that was released. So, he used six seventy-five million, two forty thousand, nine seventy-seven naira, one, one kobo, which is equivalent to fifty-seven point three seven percent. The total contract sum, which is twenty-eight million, four thousand, eight hundred and seventeen US dollars, forty-seven cents for offshore component of the project, was equivalent to three billion, nine hundred and three million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and seven naira, fourteen kobo at the prevailing exchange rate of one thirty-nine naira point three nine, uh, one thirty-nine naira, thirty-nine kobo for a US dollar. That's at that time. So, the total contract sum at the then prevailing exchange rate was the offshore component, which I've just, uh, listed, stated, three billion, nine hundred and three million, five ninety-one thousand, five hundred and seven naira, fourteen kobo, plus two hundred and seventy-six million, three hundred and seventy thousand, which was the onshore component. The money for the onshore component. Sir? Okay, okay. It's four billion, one seventy-nine million, nine sixty-one thousand, five hundred and seven naira, fourteen kobo. Four billion, one seventy-nine million, nine sixty-one thousand, five hundred and seven naira, fourteen kobo. So, the percentage release of the total contract sum, twenty-eight point one six percent. Equivalent to the one point one billion. So, the overall total, total percentage of work done was sixteen point one six percent based on the total amount released.
Awarded in two thousand and one? It was awarded in two thousand and fourteen? Two thousand and four, sorry. Two four, fifteen percent was paid in two thousand and sixteen. Two thousand and six, sorry. Permit me. Now, you look at the period, bidding, award of contract, release of fifteen percent. Look at the relevance of that contract. What is it that the Nigerian government wanted to achieve with that, those equipments? You know, change of technology and right, you did mention it. You know, and maybe that is why in two thousand and fourteen, the company requested for an upward review or downward review of the contract. Relevance is very important. Let us not miss this relevance. Because the equipment that we wanted to use then, for whatever purpose it was, in two thousand and, uh, even say six, when the fifteen percent was released, we are now in two thousand and nineteen, thirteen years. This full, it keeps changing every second. So, what is the relevance of that equipment now as I talk to you? I just want you to put it down, whether Nigeria still needs that or not. You understand, let us have that. Secondly, before you started, the Permanent Secretary did mention that one of the major problems, uh, we had issue with that contract. I'm not looking at the figures now, I'm just looking at just the T V. So that if we get this one, all these figures, you are calling, we may not even get into them. He did mention that one of the problems was the death of one of the partners in the contract. The contract was issued in two thousand and four. After it was bidet in two thousand and one. Fifteen percent was released in two thousand and six. Dankabou, if you are referring to the same Dankabou that everybody knows, I hope it's the same one, Alhaji Muhammad Adamu Dankabou of Kan, Kabul Airlines. That man died in April five, two thousand and... So, where is the link? He didn't die in two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. The man died in two thousand and two, before the contract was even awarded, before the fifteen percent was even released. So, how can it be a problem for this contract? Permanent Secretary, you understand what I'm saying? I know Dankabou died in two thousand and, uh, two because around that time, I was somewhere. And I got the news, it was a shock for me. So, I can never forget that day. The man died in two thousand and two. Please, let's find an answer to the problem of this contract. Don't put it on that dead man, please. Because he died in two thousand and two. Then, finally, Mr. Chairman, in two thousand and fourteen, when the ministry wrote to the contractor that this thing is lingering, you know, for the same reason that I asked the secretary with the first question in terms of relevance, what did the company do? Did they ask for an upward review? And was it approved by the, uh, government? If so, what is the review amount? Let's see and have it. Then, in two thousand and, December of two thousand and eighteen, when two hundred million naira was released to them, do you think it was a wise decision to do so? Because when you gave them sixty-six million, they did not account for seventeen million. Why give them another money again? And more so, for all of us in public service, we know in December, we don't quickly release money. There is a question mark. Why releasing the money in December?
The issue is, we are having more and more of wireless communications within the country, and we need to monitor the radio frequency spectrum to ensure that only duly licensed users use the frequency spectrum and operate radio communication equipment. So, the project is still very relevant to government. Yes. This particular, uh, contract to this set of contractors was abandoned. And because of the complication of the issues surrounding the implementation.
No, but excuse, do you still maintain that Dankabou died? That the date of Dankabou was instrumental to...
No, no, no. What, what I was saying is, the, the family or the estates, uh...
Usually, the contract process is this. The ministry will have sat, and the Ministerial Tenders Board will have selected a contracted base on the bidding system. I think that was why, when they went to the council, there was controversy as to who should be the owner of the contract. Because as at that time, when I got this brief, I just could not understand why, after the contract has been signed, they will still have controversy as to who should be the, the, the person in charge. Truly speaking, MTB sits and, uh, recommends a particular company before it goes to MTB. I mean, it goes to fake for a favor. So, I think the, the, the award that we was talking about should be the one that was done initially when the bidding took place. I would need to now go back and check the date of the bidding for this particular contract. And two thousand and one to two thousand and eight is actually, I can't see how relevant an equipment in two thousand and one will still be in two thousand and eight. As I'm talking now, we already have, uh, some radio monitoring equipment that are already mounted on, on vehicles, which we intend to deploy them, uh, very soon to, to, to look for revenue, to boost our own revenue. And this are state-of-the-art equipment. But even these ones, already there are additional ones that they say can, uh, uh, are even better than these ones again. This is something we bought just about
Two years, three years ago?
Three years ago. And we, we are, we are even yet to have deployed our own, and new ones are already coming out. So, the reality about this is that technology changes very fast. So, if we really need to continue this contract, then we really need to, um, start on the basis of, of evaluating everything from the scratch.
Uh, one of the directors of this company is that. Isn't it? Good. And I heard from you that, uh, you released over five hundred and something million to the contractor, Utaata Accounting. Then, what did the ministry do? When you release from the contractor, Utaata Accounting for the fund, you release to who? What did you do?
Just like I wanted to say, um, we had problem. For example, the two hundred million naira that the honorable, uh, member had asked, why did we actually, oh, have to state here that the, uh, department did not recommend for that payment. We didn't recommend, it was even a tussle. And the point is that even ICPC was called in because some of the members of the Captel, that's Kabul's, uh, part of the district, they wrote petition to ICPC, to EFCC, and to, to the General's Office. So, there was an investigation that was carried out. And then, um, eventually, the, the, the problem was that the, one of the parties, that's the partner to the American company, uh, that was, uh... the, one of the parties, that's the partner to the American company, uh, that was, uh, the, the representative of that company is the person that was saying, he, he, he was the one following uh, the ministry, I mean, following up on the ministry to implement the project. So, but later he died after the last payment, two hundred million. It was paid to, to his, to the company. Yes, later on he died, he died to two hundred million naira. So I was also invited to I C P C, he was invited there for questioning and all this regarding that two hundred million. But the files were collected and like I said, investigation was done and even the Attorney General's Office recommended that some money should be refunded through the bank of the company, that company, Bionica, which was representing the American company. They wrote, the mi- uh, the, the minister, the Permanent Secretary then wrote to Intercontinental Bank to refund the money. That was the recommendation of the Attorney General of the Federation. So, but the issue is that action was taken to stop further releases of the money. That's why we did not agree that further releases should be made, payments should be made, like the two hundred million. Because we felt that the, the contractor had not performed or done what commensurate with what it was, uh, released to, I mean, was paid to, to, to the company. So we actually tried to stop it, but later on when the, the company collected that amount, normal money was paid to the company.
Same, and Bionica Technology, two of us, good. Two, let me also say that there are great differences between the submission, other submission you give and the documented submission give in terms of the project cost. One, project cost is three point eight seven billion, where other submission is four billion, one hundred and seventeen billion. Are we agreed to that fact?
I think it was a mistake that they, they, like, it wasn't added.
Even if you add it, even if you didn't add it, you have two point, three point nine billion, even if you didn't add it. You have three point nine billion. Even if you did point nine billion. Two, or three, going further, at this stage, can we say that that contract, the valid contract? As you asked that, can we also that, say that the contract was performed substantially? Take into consideration that you have paid one point seven seven billion out of four point one seven billion. One point one seven seven billion you have paid out of four point one seven billion, over and above that, five hundred and nineteen million is missing. Four point nine, five hundred and nineteen billion is missing. No, it's missing, because first, two critical partners to the transaction are dead. Danko is dead, the Jofri is dead. And they represent the capital and code them, we don't know where Bionica is. And we are losing five hundred and seventeen billion. Now come to think of it, even the equipment that was supposed to be in a containerized vehicle came into, came in crates. And the best of judgment, if it's your own private business, we'll accept those equipments. Because they didn't meet the standard of the transaction, we'll accept them. If you remove the costs of those, you will see that the amount missing is more than five hundred and nineteen million. Because the fact that I asked you to supply more, I supply coke. It means that you have devalued my transaction with you. So I'm supposed to get change, the difference between the coke. So the difference between the containerized vehicle and the crates, going to several millions of naira, which add further to the fact that more than five hundred and nineteen million was missing. So at the end of the day, more than fifty percent of money paid, developed wings. So can we not say that we should revalid that contract in the best interest of Nigeria? As the head of that department, despite forgetting that you're going, you're going to U S C C, what can you recommend to government? If it's your own business, look at it as A B C Nigerian Limited, which you are the chairman, chief executive. You are in this kind of transaction, what would you do? Thank you.
Actually, wrote an undertaking, it's in the file, we can produce all those documents. You wrote an undertaking to come and complete this project in country. That is, the provide the, the, the vehicles and fit the equipment inside containers. You wrote an undertaking, that was why we even agreed to pay the two hundred and eighty three million that time. There, there is, it's in the file. Because we said we are not going to recommend for payment. So it was putting pressure and, uh, put pressure and then eventually it was approved that, okay, let him, let the company write an undertaking that they will do this after they collect this. So that was what happened, they wrote, they wrote the undertaking, but they never fulfilled that undertaking.
Yes, thank you for coming, for honour our invitation. I'm a new member in the house and in my life, I'd like to answer. I see you as a reliable person, you are the one in charge, so my question will go to you and to director over there. Uh, he said that there's a two uncompleted projects. The first one, the second one, the second one I lost because there are so many million, million, billion, billion being mentioned. So I will not ask any question, I would let my colleague deal with that one. Now, the first one that he mentioned, he said that there were about thirty eight million. And twenty two million was paid, but the contract was terminated. I want to know why, I want to know the name of the contractor, I want to know when the contract was awarded. I want to know what percentage completed. If that project is still useful for us in Nigeria, because it's been a long time, if it's useful, how much do we need, your ministry need to complete that project? Because no one mentioned about that first, um, abandoned project.
Think court would have concluded this. The court actually gave us the chance to agree and give them the terms of agreement so that it will become the judgment of the court. As I don't know what they call it, concern, concern judgment or something like that. But the contractor saw that in doing the evaluation of the items that were completed, the ministry made an initial mistake and overvalued his payments. When he came and he was, this, and this overvaluation was short to him, the difference was only three, two, two million. The difference was two million, he is aware and he agreed that is the correct thing. But he said since we have already agreed on that, we should pay him at, including the two million like that. We said, no, but it's a mistake and therefore we will pay you the correct amount. If he had agreed, this matter would have been resolved. So he, he, he refused to accept that we must pay him including that mistake. And the officer that did the initial evaluation that discovered this mistake has withdrawn his submission. So who is now going to pay that two million? So we tried to advise him, it was proving difficult and that is why the matter is still in court.
Completed already. And not, no amount was paid before the project was completed. And we are aware of the Public Procurement Act. Is it in compliance with the act? Because I believe you have a legal department.
Okay, the, the other one
They are supposed to be commitment. So if you, if somebody completes a project hundred percent, it means it's in breach of the Public Procurement Act.
Okay, same process. Once the year ends and the project is, because we conceived the project to be completed within that year. If the contractor does not complete within that period and gets his own payment, the money lapses. Once the money lapses and it is not, the project is not included in next year's budget, we run into this kind of difficulties. And that is why we, we turn them to be liabilities and we always send them back to budget.
Are we supposed to bypass the Public Procurement Act? Because the budget is supposed to lapse.
You, you know, well, well, this repeats itself, as not only in our ministry, I think this is a big challenge really. All over the place and it could be the, the reason for most of these issues on liabilities. And you can, because we have no authority to, to, to take money from any budget line and pay another person, we are unable to pay this kind of contractors.
The, look at these issues very well. Um, my understanding of it or why I asked about the Kobo thing, because it's a legal entity. Whichever company, the Kobo belongs out of the three. Now the family is seeing that maybe they are going to be shut changed and they, and they, they dragged you into it. You have just insisted that it's a legal entity, whoever is coming, if they are writing in the name of the company, the dispute should be between companies, not individuals. We shouldn't get carried away with individuals, if we do that, then all our projects will follow the same way. On relevance, the Permanent Secretary is telling the committee that we'll come to that. On the utilization, you have not answered my question, you have not answered honour of the Igwe's question. Because money have been spent and you did not feel it to say that we have wasted money. I agree with your sentiments, maybe as a public servant, you tried to block it, but somebody insisted that the money I'm glad that E F C C is looking into it, are they still in need?
The panzer wrote on behalf of the ministry to I C P C for them to give us report of their investigation. Unfortunately, we didn't get the, the report.
So don't worry, if Clark would joke note of that, we will request from that from the I C P C. And do not forget also to send a copy of the contract, so that we'll look at it and see where we are. How many agencies are here aside from the ministry, Nakom Sad?
Four, four naira fifty kobo. And the second payment, forty five million, two, two hundred and eighty nine thousand, seven naira fifty kobo. And when we found out, um, some of the releases, that was when the, the Ministry of Finance was trying to say, okay, let's eliminate duplication of projects and all that. Naseni was also, also embarked on the same kind of project, similar project as at the same time. And when, I don't know, maybe due to relevance or because Naseni is, I mean, ours was dropped and I think Nasenizo was being funded and so till date nothing has been, we have physical structure to linked level and the structure is there. But what we are now proposing is that, I think that the structure we have, being a limited liability company, so that what the commitment of government will not go into waste, we could form, go into a PPP arrangement with S T B manufacturers to support the, um, broadcasting industry, because the building is actually also very close to our D T H center. So that is what we are recommending because you, like I heard the, this committee asking, what is the relevance and what should we do with those persons? So we are now proposing that, so that government investment does not go into waste, whatever we have right now, we should be given approval to go into a PPP arrangement with S T B manufacturers to use it, complete it and then use it to manufacture um, S T B setup boxes and again, we create jobs for Nigerians through that factory. Because it's a big structure which I believe would be a good factory. We have, it's better, I think it would be good if this honourable committee grants us such approval.
They have taken already seventy two million. Now, from what you are saying, you have hands off. Because there is a duplication of effort. Naseni, I don't know what Naseni stands for.
National Engineering and Science Infrastructure, it's on, it's on the financial science.
Pandemics of Science and Technology, so I would suggest Clark, so that we not just say hands off like that, we'll invite Naseni to give us a, a status report of their own contract. Of course, if there is another similar committee that is looking at that, let them know that we are doing this. So that it doesn't look that we are going into their territory. And also, um, madam, this contractor, have they also doing hands off like you? Because contractually you have an agreement.
They keep writing to us, but we don't have funds to.
I don't want us to run from, from fire to fire, because if there is a contractual agreement between the government and another entity and you are not saying that you don't want that contract, there could be some penalty, maybe even higher than the four hundred million that we are talking about. You understand what I'm saying? So it's not a question I'm saying you are handing over or you are going to use it for another purpose, we have to, we at parliament, we look at everybody, including this company, because it's a Nigerian company, you have Nigerians there, we want to treat everybody fairly. So I wouldn't suggest that we just hands off like that, we need to find a way of talking with this company. You have to start, because I don't want to expose the legislature, the parliament, to start bringing them here with controversy. You have to find a way of, you know, doing that, so that we'll find a way forward, this is one. Secondly, yes, Naseni would come, would ask them, uh, the, how far they have gone. You did mention that you are a limited liability company. Who are the shareholders of this company?
Murphy.
Murphy, Ministry of Finance, this government, then who?
That's all.
It's a government entity now, it doesn't concern, it's Nigeria.
Hundred percent.
It's hundred percent, it's hundred percent government.
That's why I said PPP, we maybe we should, we need to get the approval to to now have form, I mean, the right approval to be able to engage a private sector to come and partner with us.
I would suggest, I don't know, maybe in the report of the committee, because the kind of services they are offering, don't leave it to government alone. That's why you are running into problem, because if you have this company that is going to pro- producing this PCB and other telecommunications, whatever, you will engage in economic, commercial activities. Anytime you do that with government, it fails. Let, let, let that your act or whatever bill that's set, you don't have it. You don't have nothing.
Mister Chairman, sir.
Yes.
Mister Chairman, I'm here. Some transformation, you know, the transformative process that has kind of put some slow on the activities of the company. At the moment, we have a D T H center that is having discussion with regulatory agencies with a view to setting up an arrangement for the production of setup buses. So certainly, that arrangement will crystallize into a, a joint partnership with the private producers. And then we need, that, that, that building or that facility can be our equity into that arrangement. But the point you made is very clear. Uh, we have entered into a contractual agreement with a contractor for a job of four hundred million, out of which seventy two million has been expended and then some job done, up to eighteen percent. I think what we are trying to do now is to, because government funds our capital projects. So it is to get the commitment that is remaining, so that we can through budgetary provision, have it settled out with the contractor to the level of work that has been done, so that we don't have to incur any contractual legal liability. And that is why I said, with the point you raised is very correct. As for the status of the company, it's a wholly owned government company. Even though overtired, there have been some efforts to privatize it and then convert it to a purely private company. But it's a critical national asset that government is safe. Uh, it is slow about taking such a decision because we, we know what has happened to privatize organizations in this country. Some are successful, many are not too successful. So that is the stage we are now and some of these things are impeding the progress and fast movement of some of the policies we are implementing.
The business, the better for everybody. The country will benefit, um, other businesses that are into, that require services will also benefit. If you leave it in the hands of government, my turn, you sell fine to Oga, Permanent Secretary, it's not his fault, it's bureaucracy. It takes whatever, where it comes from, so let's think around how we're going to do this.
The ministry was smoking on that.
To the private hands to handle, but things that are very strategic and of national interest we simply manage them in a way and manner that will be efficient and effective for everybody, sir. and of national interest, we simply manage them in a way and manner that will be efficient and effective for everybody, sir.
Second, come here, rightly as you said, honourable. Uh, when we came last time on the subject of abandoned property, oh, sorry, abandoned uh projects, we were very clear that we do not have much of duplication for this type of services, including the National Assembly. We have people that are providing similar services that we are doing, which, you know, at the end of the day, we don't need them, really. We will get there someday. So please, you have to provide this to the um Committee, Clark. Three things, number one, these five hundred plus, you have to be exact the number. Number two, for the websites, this three hundred plus has to be exact the number. Then the state of your uncompleted headquarters or building, we need to know where is it like that. Then, yeah, as far as uncompleted projects are concerned, these are the things that you need to give to the committee. I need to do do that by tomorrow. Because this is this is not difficult. By tomorrow, we need to.
Going projects. We, which we have submitted, we have to call your attention to a particular which is actually ongoing. It's a twenty, the project was awarded in twenty thirteen, it's a building and equipment of a virtual library project in Russo in Zamfara State. Uh. So what caused the delay in the project are twofold. Number one is that it's a building, so by the time the the project commenced and the contractor got to a particular point, he actually has done about sixty percent, sixty five percent uh of the building. Funds had to be moved up that year. And subsequent, the following year, because funds were not budgeted for, it lapsed into the subsequent year, like two thousand and fifteen, so that's the first reason. The second reason was that by the time he was not about to continue, there was a dispute on the land, because the land was actually given for the project by the then, by the former honourable member of the House for that project, and there was a dispute. Or on resumption of the, our DG, that was in, um, yes, September, September, no, the new DG. He actually called for the for the documents of that project, and when he was told the reason, he actually set up a committee to look into the dispute, which has just been resolved. And even recently, we sent our staff to Russo, he just came back during the week, and he has informed us that the dispute has been resolved and all parties are ready to commence. So right now, the building is, uh, there is sixty five percent completed. Carca is up to roof level, has roofed it, but finishing touches yet to be made. And the total sum of the contract is one hundred and seventy five million, so far ninety five million has been paid, which is about fifty two percent. The contractor started with enthusiasm and he has gone beyond his of the fifty two percent payment was given, he has actually done up to sixty five percent. Uh. So basically, that is the only project we have that is ongoing, it's not actually abandoned since. Thank you very much.
Honourable collection, any question?
Well, Chairman, the pack of documents we have from NIDAN shows completed, completed. And I can see Nigerian people as we speak. I will join to send it a good job, they should continue understood.
We can find him one or two reasons out of any question we ask. Because I feel there should be background check at every point in time, despite whoever that wants to donate or give out anything that will assist us in carrying out our function. There should be proper background check, whether you're buying it, whether it is you're loaning it, whether it is going to be a gift. Because if from all you said, you said that the contractor had a whole lot of enthusiasm, you know, in carrying out his function. Uh, vis a vis as well, I think the management that had a whole lot of enthusiasm as well in making the necessary payments. Maybe the funding wasn't the problem, there may be one or two hitches concerning what you have just mentioned. So along the line, I still going to go a long way to tell us that each time we want to go into that kind of arrangement, we must necessarily do a background check to make sure that there won't be any hitch anywhere, because if we sweep it under cap, saying that this is not a factor. It's a very serious factor, because if there are background checks and evaluation and other things would have helped us a lot to achieve whatever M we wanted to achieve in that line. So that's exactly what I want to mention.
Nineteen ninety nine. But we just had to bring it to four, so that you, this um committee will assist us. This project we abandoned between nineteen seventy six and nineteen eighty. So the only one that we have abandoned, that one was even awarded in nineteen ninety eight, but because it was ongoing till two thousand and one, that was why we had to present this. This is the construction of Nipos Corporate Headquarters, situated at Naitama. It was awarded at a cost of ni- um eight hundred million Naira in the year nineteen ninety eight. The contractor is Messrs Aldradu Nigeria Limited. Amount committed to it was two hundred and forty million Naira only. The status of project was twenty five percent, as of twenty eight percent as of two thousand and one. But it was abandoned due to non-release of fund, because capital foot project had not been funded in Nipos since the year two thousand and one. So that is the only project we have, sir. That falls on the the period of review.
In some cases, we must look behind or look outside of the bus. And one of those cases is postal services in Nigeria. You have a list of nearly
One sixty one.
One sixty two projects abandoned after nineteen seventy six. What, where was I? I was in primary school, yes. I was in primary school.
I thought you would say you are not yet born.
No, 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 yes, no, I'm not, I pass Akada. I was in primary school. And today, some of these project have not been completed. Nearly forty eight or forty five years later on. Question now have been, if a project that was started in nineteen seventy eight at project cost of one hundred and fifty five million, and so far, seventy seven million paid, outstanding thirty five million, which contractor will accept seventy million for that project? No contractor, no contractor will accept seventy million for that project. Because seventy million is only hundred percent. So the question is, what to do? Because we cannot say we abandoned the post, postal offices, they have been commenced. They have been commenced. Some of them are at a critical stage, but the question now is, at the stage which they are, are they being used? Some of them, are they being used? Yeah, you have recommended PPP, budgetary provision. Uh, in most cases, PPP, I think that PPP is the best option. Just like you say, since two thousand and one, no budgetary provision, capital project for Nipos. Because you're supposed to be earning money, and you earn money. If you earn money, what do you do with your money? These are the questions.
Um, within Nigeria, still costs fifty Naira. And ordinarily, a postal packet, whatever the postage rate, the minimum should be the cost of the prevailing rate of the newsreader, which is two hundred to fifty, and we are still charging fifty Naira. So that's number one.
So why is it twenty fifty Naira?
It has to go through some processes which has started now.
Does postal fee need legislative backing? Or legislative approval?
Well, it does from the, it needs ministerial approval. And even administrative, yes. So that's number one problem.
We are working on that, sir. We are working actually on Napos, we are working on a lot of things. A lot of things, even those one sixty one were likely to even request for more points. We are working, we even request for more assets beyond those one sixty. It's a, it's supposed to be connected affair, everybody needs to be connected, whether it's in the village, in the rural area, or in the The easiest place you can make them to be easily connected is uh the Nipos network. Because it's all over, everywhere. Just as you said, nineteen seventy six, you were in the primary school, probably where you were going to secondary school, they brought your admission letter and they went and read it in the church or or in the public place where you could, if they have access to it. It was Napos that delivered that letter to you, sir. So what we are trying to do really is to reform Napos into six, uh, I mean, get six subsidiaries that will work under Napos. And CBN and um National, CBN and um and NASA. NASA, that is, are working on this National Rural uh macro finance agency that will enable people to deposit and make transactions within the Nipos point. That is to do, that is under their financial inclusion program. And we we have, we have actually gone really very far on this. And they are willing to, CBN and NASA are willing to commit funds, that is why they were talking of the PPP. Willing to commit funds to ensure that these are up. Then two, remember that for now, um, NEPC said they have been able to register only thirty six million people out of two hundred million people. The easiest way you can get people to to register and get their national identity number is actually those points. They are closer to the villages and so on. So we are working on a lot of things in respect to that. And that is why I said that network would not even be sufficient enough. In fact, the NASA, the CBN people actually said this. And that is why, when people say, why is it that when you deposit money, they are going to charge you, when you are, you are taking money, they are going to charge you. If we don't do that, we won't arrive at where we ought to be. Most transactions now are done online. And if you do the payment online, you do the uh, you 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 see the picture, you accept it, you review it, you do the payment. That 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 product needs to be delivered to you wherever you may be in Nigeria. Napos is the only organization that has the capacity to deliver that product to you door to door. So that is why we are working on a lot of those things, including national addressing system, because as it is now, if you, if I say I want to go to your village, I'm sure you have to draw a map and show me where, and this, identify one big tree or something, but what we are trying to do really is that we should have um global positioning system that should be able to tell us, once we enter your courts, the vehicle should take us directly, if you place it in your car, you can drive directly to the venue of the place you are going to. And that is why our security agencies are actually not performing too. Because if there is an armed robbery now somewhere, and then you are, you want to tell the policeman, you have dial one one two, which NCC have actually given the number, it's it's working, you dial one one to pick it, then you say, somebody, an armed robber is attacking me, they say, what is your address? You say, behind the mango tree that is under this, you know, the policeman will just be lost and he's not able to assess you on time. But the moment you are able to give the exact code number, then it is easier for them, one, it will show them which is the nearest patrol vehicle to that particular point. And when, and then how to assess you and be able to, that is why the the armed robbers are actually taking advantage of of some of these things. So we are working a lot with Nipos. We have a consultant that is actually working on that and we have gone really very, very far. And the whole meetings that the CBN governor insists on sitting in that meeting for well over six hours to to be there physically to attend that meeting. So I know that we are really working on that, and by the time we are through, I'm sure Nigerians will be.
I would agree with this, you know, this submission. And this submission, that all I have, that because we have funded Nipos. This one, I want to, if you talk about this one, because this one before nineteen ninety nine, our impressive gather is between nineteen ninety and up to today. So now, another one that I have made now is two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen. Ma'am, are you saying that there's nothing, no project at all from nineteen ninety nine up to two thousand and sixteen?
No, they talked about abandoned projects, we have ongoing projects.
Okay, so all the project.
Ongoing projects that are within our budgetary allocation.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, but this one, like I said, is forty four, and only five of four been, you know, give some money, you know, NIF funding. Only five project of forty four. But my first question, between nineteen ninety nine to two thousand and sixteen, are you telling us that there is no abandon project, everything that been, what they were doing that year was completed?
That, that, they were completed.
Okay. Uh, if that's so, okay, because I don't have any, uh, any document to back you, I don't have any from nineteen ninety nine to two thousand and sixteen to even verify that. Now, uh, to the PS, please. Uh, I want you to pay attention to one thing in this country. We are poor and we are rich. There are some people that they have opportunity to do the May with the express, DHA, stuff like that. The Nipo is our traditional, that we made it, you know, our letter from point A to point B. And most of our, when I say what we are, not everybody were able to afford to still, you know, do the express May. All this, but all this uh project that Nipo asking for, out of forty four, only four or five being funded, even when you look into it, only ten percent, twenty five percent, what happened? Are we trying to not to encourage or try to let the postal office go out of business or we don't want, or we want, or we try to promote, because if we spend all this money, we're able to fund it there, maybe more work group are able to perform fairly well.
On their personal cost. And ask them to return their revenue after paying operating surplus to fund their capital projects. That is why it was based on the fact that, over the years, we discovered that the revenue itself was not sufficient to fund most of their projects. That is why we had to go on this reformation program, in order to show all their revenue, to to give them the opportunity to be able to fund most of their own projects. So that, in fact, this thing started about twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen that it started. I came and met it and I just, you know, dived into it and joined them quickly to to work on it. That is why I'm able to actually talk on that. That's why we are working on that. It's not as if we have forgotten about it, we are actually, postal office is very, very essential.
Carrying one thing or the other, doing the deep part of the role the Nipo was supposed to play. And maybe there are, to a greater extent, some sense of competitiveness, you know, it's a little bit low. And that's why the efficiency and effectiveness is under current marginal limit. I want to find out, um, the project from nineteen seventy six, as you mentioned, till two thousand and sixteen or the nineteen eighty. Most of those projects then, that you now said, okay, you couldn't carry it over, they are still there. Of all those projects, have you ever asked whether before establishing or starting those projects, whether they were need driven? Or demand driven, you know, so, okay, we want to establish this office here for this so 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 reason, proximity to the people, one thing or the other, whether it's need driven before they establish, which now will uh dovetail into saying, okay, we can inherit some of these projects and bring it forth to make sure that that need, that now led to establishing such project in those areas, let's fulfill that need so as, so that it can serve that purpose. Of all those projects, how many of those projects have your establishment, you know, picked? Now developing to either completion or still ongoing within this timeline of nineteen seventy six to nineteen eighty and presently? I'm sure, one, want to find out whether it was, you feel we have done the necessary evaluation analysis, it's okay, this is need driven? Were some of them now taken over by you, considering the need for such projects within this timeline?
There's a committee that is actually dedicated to that, is chaired by the Director Director Telecoms and Postal Service, she is not around because she had to accompany the minister for that reversal. She is not around because she had to accompany the minister for that reverse postal unit. So we, we have all those that are, we are working on all of those things. Working on all of. To start from our beginning. What I said is, when this, when Na- when we agreed to shore up the revenue of Nipos, that was when we had to go back and take stock of all those projects. And what we are looking at is not whether they were, they were conceived on the basis of relevance. I don't have information in respect to their relevance when they were conceived. What we were actually, uh, concerned with was the geographical spread of the projects across the country and whether there are gaps that that committee will need to look into them. For now, we have taken stock of all of the, the locations of the projects and the spread across the country. And we don't, the committee is working closely with the CBN to be able to answer the question.
No, sir, please, sorry, sir. Sorry, Mr. Jackson, you see, why I'm saying this is not, we're all Nigerians. And when we're not getting it right, we must try our best possible to put it in right perspective. CBN has its own role. Whatever they are doing is just to oversight and it must have limits.
But you have not given it any commencement date or anything. What, when do you think? Because even the CBN governor, as busy as he is, will be finding time to spend six hours with you.
He insists throughout the meeting.
Okay, so how so?
Uh, our ability to renovate those offices. That will be the only. They are, they are commencing.
So those ones, uh, of one hundred and sixty-two, they have commenced some.
Not, not out of the abandoned.
Elected fifty pilot sites. And out of this fifty, I think they have done more than forty already, and some of them are already funded.
Announced by the Central Bank.
Yes. So those functional post offices that they select to, uh. Yes, so they are taking responsibility of at least, uh, renovating portions that the bank will use. Yes, yes. So but in most of the selected sites, Nipos has already carried out renovation. At least the major one where you have roof, uh, major, then the portion they need to, uh, remodel to suit banking services, banking needs, that is what they are doing. But majority of those locations, because year year, Nipos have been carrying renovation. That's why we are having, uh, ongoing projects that we see they are ongoing. They are still within contract, uh, period, so we cannot say they are abandoned. And the question the honorable member was asking of, uh, some of those project being funded. Part of our approach to contract is we hardly, uh, give large, uh, amount of contract. So most of our contractors don't really need mobilization. You are having job of maybe nine million, ten million. So most of these contractors go straight to site. When they finish is when we now proceed their payment. That's why we see that maybe they are not funded. It's those that are completed that we have funded. But that, those are, that are ongoing, once they finish, we address their payment.
They are funded but not with public funds. They use their money to do it and you pay them back.
Now, these ones, this one sixty-one postal office building, apart from the one in Abuja, is not just the number. Over the years, we have been reducing. The number was far, far more than that. We have been reducing the number, that's how it came down to this one sixty-two. So it's part of the question, uh, one of the honorable member was asking the PS. Nipos has needs for many of these sites, but because our budget cannot carry all at the same time, we have been doing them over time to the committee.
So that part of, we go out, we will see that one. Then secondly, you just admitted that it's not the whole building that they are using for these, um, banking services, proposed banking services. They just take a portion.
We are coexisting.
We are coexisting. They just take a portion and they use for that service. This is very interesting to note, because madam, I'm serious. We are going to push to take that post office to make it into hospital. We have enough land to give you to do your, your postal services and your banking services. You understand? Me and you will talk this one, this outside. I have the letter here for your Oga. Making that request. Come and see it. Where is this camera? Come and show her. This building that you put people, camera, take evidence. Take, you go put the receipt here and you give me, because we cannot continue like this.
But I call, we are these staff quarters along Blue Orbison Road. You can see now that we have dominos visa there and. However, that land was collected or was allocated by the state government to, uh, to PRT for residential purposes. But it has been converted to private use. Please, what is the solution? Have to address it.